Everybody and welcome to the 2023 Qualified Allocation Plan Draft Hearing. My name is Richard Livingston. I serve as Deputy Chief of Staff and Communications Director here at the Department of Housing and Community Development, here to provide some brief housekeeping updates before we get started. During tonight's public hearing, attendees are in listen-only mode until such a time that those wishing to provide public comment are elevated to the role of panelist and can provide public comment on the draft plan. If you have questions during the hearing, you could submit them anytime using the Q&amp;A panel, which is at the bottom right-hand corner of your screen, or the chat function, and we have staff on hand to monitor both features. This presentation is being recorded. If you're experiencing technical issues, you can contact Webex Technical Support at 1-866-779-3239, and I'll put that in the chat, or visit help/webx.com. You may hear me throughout tonight's hearing as I work with the team to help navigate this platform. Otherwise, I'll now turn the program over to Development Finance Division Manager, Erin Wilson.
Thanks, Richard. My name is Erin Wilson. I am the manager of the Development Finance Division, and you will hear from a few of our team members tonight as we walk through a presentation. So our agenda for the evening is to provide an overview of low-income housing tax credits, as well as to highlight the changes that are being proposed in the Qualified Allocation Plan. So we won't do a comprehensive review of the Qualified Allocation Plan, but we'll focus just on what's changed between the 2023 draft and the 2021 draft, or the 2021 QAP. And then, of course, we'll open it for public comment. Before we kick off our presentation, I do want to turn it over to Acting Director Colleen Green to provide a few opening remarks for us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Colleen Green, and I'm the Acting Director of the District's Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD. Thank you for joining us for our public hearing on today, Tuesday, February 28, 2023, on the Draft 2023 Qualified Allocation Plan, or QAP. Pursuant to the federal law, the QAP governs how the district administers federal low-income housing tax credits, an important resource that helps achieve the district's housing goals, and most efficiently use city resources to produce and preserve the maximum number of affordable housing units. Once finalized, the 2023 QAP will outline how the district plans to administer all federal low-income housing tax credits, and how both 9% and 4% LITEX will be competitively allocated. The QAP aligns with the district's consolidated RFP, which competitively allocates GAAP financing resources and operating subsidy with LITEC and other financing tools to fund projects that will contribute to the district's goal of 12,000 net new affordable units by 2025. Before we turn to public comment, I wanted to highlight some important changes we've made in this draft QAP. In January 2023, DHCD, along with our partners from the D.C. Housing Finance Agency, implemented a new process for how affordable housing projects can secure the government resources they need to move their projects forward. Now, the DHCD and DCHFA will have application windows every January and July each year for projects to complete threshold review and secure financing, like taxes and bonds and the associated 4% LITEC. Projects can also use one of these application windows to apply for the 9% LITEC and additional GAAP subsidy like Housing Production Trust Fund dollars, CDBG, home, and operating subsidy like local rent supplement vouchers. My team will explain more in the presentation, but this is a positive change to make sure projects that are ready can keep moving as we balance resource availability. To that end, it is important that we hear from the public regarding the 2023 Draft QAP as we move to finalize this QAP this spring in time for the July 2023 application window. This July 2023 application window will include the first release of the consolidated RFP under the new process. So you want to make sure everything is aligned with our collective priorities as we keep pushing towards our affordable housing goals to make D.C. a more inclusive and equitable city. With that, I would just like to remind everyone listening that the public comment period on the 2023 Draft QAP ends this Friday, March 3. So I would invite any and all who would like to submit comments to do so by emailing qap input at d c dot gov. Thank you, and I will now turn back to my team to continue our presentation.
Great. Thank you, Director. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. My name is Anna Scallid. I'm a Special Project Coordinator in the Development Finance Division here at DHCD. As Erin described, I will give a brief overview of the Long-Come Housing Tax Credit Program and the Qualified Allocation Plan, and then walk through a summary of the substantive proposed revisions to the 2023 QAP. Again, not, you know, walking through all criteria and requirements, although it may feel that way, but just focusing and highlighting on the proposed changes. And after the presentation, we will have an opportunity for public comment and testimony. The federal tax credit, the Low-Income Tax Credit, is the federal credit that was designed to encourage the private sector to invest in housing affordable to households at or below 60% of the median family income. This is now up to 80% through the relatively new average income set aside. As the allocating agency for the district, DHCD allocates these credits to development projects, while for that effectively sell the tax credits for equity investments into their affordable housing project. There are two types of LITEC. Both are competitive, as the Director mentioned, as of 2023, both the 9% tax credit and the 4% tax credit, which must be used in conjunction with tax-exempt bonds available from our sister agency, the D.C. Housing Finance Agency, or DCHFA. DHCD is responsible for administering the LITEC program on behalf of the District of Columbia in partnership with several other agencies. And as the Director described, the QAP is the district's federally mandated plan for the allocation of tax credits that are aligned to the district by the federal program. This governs the residential rental housing finance by the 9% and 4% credit in conjunction with other private lenders, tax-exempt bonds, and some of the local and federal loan programs the Director mentioned upfront. So the plan covers the federally mandated requirements of the program as well as district priority needs. All projects applying for 9% or 4% credits must meet all of the threshold eligibility requirements in the QAP, which are further clarified in DHCD's online application and fleshed out in the document itself. This includes project criteria, financial criteria, applicant criteria, some third-party reports and plans, and compliance criteria. Again, I'll review the proposed changes, both to the threshold criterion evaluation or scoring criteria later in the presentation. The 9% and 4% LITEC applications are also subject to competitive application review using the evaluation criteria in the QAP. The document also describes the new tax-exempt bond process the Director mentioned, beginning in January 2023. The district, through DHCD and our partners at DCHFA, instituted a new process to allocate tax-exempt bonds on the associated 4% LITEC. So all projects seeking tax-exempt bonds in the 4% LITEC must apply to DHCD first for a threshold review and evaluation scoring. DHCD will open an application for this threshold review and evaluation scoring in both January and July of each year, and HFA will accept applications thereafter for tax-exempt bonds, likely in January and July of each year as resources are available. The DHCD GAAP subsidy and 9% LITEC will still be allocated through the annual consolidated RFP. So a consolidated RFP being released at the same time as one or both of the DHCD review windows will allow applicants to apply for threshold review, valuation scoring, and GAAP financing subsidy all through one application. Additional detail about the process is also available at HFA's website at the address here. This is an overview of the anticipated annual process and schedule. So as I said, the applications will first come to DHCD and then go through the threshold review, valuation scoring, and then on to HFA for the readiness application. This flushes out a little detail here, and the slides will be available afterwards to kind of dig into that detail as well. To move into the substantive proposed revisions to the threshold requirements, again, all applicants for 4% or 9% credits must meet all of the threshold requirements in the QAP. They are listed here, defined in more detail in the QAP itself and in the online application. No changes to note for financial criteria, applicant criteria, or the reports and plans, but we do expect more detail on required third-party reports and plans to be published in a forthcoming underwriting guide. To get into a little more detail, the project criteria, just kind of a note of clarification here, for those of you who may have submitted applications in the 2021 QAP and RFP round or are familiar with the current document, there was a priority evaluation round as well as a general evaluation round. This priority classification review was removed, and elements were incorporated throughout the evaluation criteria. We'll touch on a few of those later in the presentation. In the compliance criteria, one major proposed change to the green building design and construction minimum standards. The intent of this requirement is to ensure that projects are in compliance with the D.C. Department of Energy and Environment Building Energy Performance Standards, or BEPS, compliance period throughout the initial LITEC compliance period. So the proposed standards in the QAP have been updated in anticipation of the second BEPS compliance period for projects that will receive building permits starting in January 2027. So the second compliance period will move from buildings 50,000 square feet and above to phase-in buildings 25,000 square feet and larger. So this isn't a change in the certification programs that are listed in the QAP, but a proposed change in the applicability to these smaller 25,000-square-foot buildings in anticipation of that second BEPS compliance round. Additional proposed change in the compliance criteria, moving from a solar-ready requirement to installing panels, primarily given the improved economics of solar in the district through the Inflation Reduction Act and other avenues. Also, a submission of a resident services plan is a new threshold requirement proposed for 2023. So all applicants would submit a written plan summarizing how they intend to provide property-wide resident services designed to improve residents' quality of life, to empower residents, and support broader community building goals. The proposed threshold requirement describes one service and one amenity, at least, that will be provided. So applicants with more comprehensive service plans that are seeking points for their application for their resident services plan submissions will submit plans of a higher level of detail that also complies with the evaluation criteria. Moving on to the evaluation scoring criteria, the following criteria will be used to competitively score, again, both applications for the 9% and the 4% credits. The new categories or changes are highlighted in red with changes pressed out. Hopefully, that's coming through clearly. Again, if not, we will have the slides available after the presentation. The proposed point totals for each subcategory are also shown here. The online application and forthcoming consolidated RFP will align with the scoring criteria here and, again, include a little more detail. Starting with the evaluation criteria and the project readiness and past performance category, there is a note here on readiness, given the updated competitive bond process. So projects applying for 4% LITEC in conjunction with a tax-exempt bond allocation must be able to close on all project financing within six months of the submission of a readiness application to DCHFA. A note on compliance with DHCD cost and funding guidelines. We are proposing adding soft costs to the types of costs here that may trigger point deductions in this category. In the inclusive and equitable housing category, we are proposing expanding the list of programs to address additional barriers to housing, to include another category, in addition to the predefined programs, provided that need is evidenced by a market study. The housing for older adults category has been separated out from residents with disabilities to hopefully more accurately reflect the needs and the options for these populations. And in the accessible housing category, we are proposing adding more specific design criteria, including the Kelsey Design Standards, either the silver, gold, platinum, silver, gold, or platinum level, or the Universal Design Standards defined in the Virginia Universal Design Standard. Continuing in the inclusive and equitable housing category, we propose refining our wealth-building criteria to be a bit more specific to residents. The wealth-building components for developer team participants are moved to a new proposed scoring criteria called Developer Capacity Building, later in the document in the Innovative and Community-Oriented Features or Programming section. Excuse me. So in the homeownership and wealth-building subcategory, we've proposed expanding that a bit to include things such as positive rent reporting for credit scores, rent payment incentives, connecting unbanked or underbanked residents to financial institutions, or shared appreciation structures. In the place-based priorities category, separated the proximity to transit out from proximity to neighborhood amenities, and are now focusing on amenities within a quarter-mile versus a half-mile. Also propose adding points for projects within a quarter-mile of a 24-hour service bus line stop. Those are the bus lines proposed in the Fair Free Bus Funding Emergency Amendment Act of 2022. And lastly, for projects of district land, excuse me, in addition to the district land dispositions described in the document, proposing that points be available for projects that incorporate a ground lease held by DHCD for rental projects or who work with a land trust for homeownership projects. In the maximizing the impact of DHCD resources category, proposed renaming and simplifying the first category here to the creation of net new units, so that maximum points would be awarded to projects in which 50% or more of the total units qualify as net new units. Also propose adding points in the affordability period restriction subcategory for perpetual affordability and for those projects with a ground lease held by a public entity. In the innovative and community-oriented features or programming subcategory, the resilient buildings and innovative design section have added a few available points for specific certifications beyond the threshold requirements. So things such as projects who commit to meeting enterprise green communities, plus for those it's not required for, and some certifications for environmentally responsible materials or low-on-body carbon. Also, points available for completing the DOE Resiliency and Solar Assessment Tool. Resident Services, I touched on that a little bit already. So looking at the more comprehensive service plans here, and also looking at the percentage of outside funding proposed for resident services, whether it's a third, a half, or over 80% of the services budget paid outside of operations. And then last, I've added some community-oriented amenities for projects. The final changes, proposed changes to highlight in the innovative and community-oriented features category for workforce development have proposed adding points for DC green jobs or workforce development programs. The same preference from the 2021 QAP carried forward for projects that exceed apprenticeship or for source hiring requirements or CDE participation. The added developer capacity building criteria I mentioned, looking here for developer partners that have not participated in a DHCD-funded project before, for teams of members who participated in or are currently in an accelerator program or partnering with experienced developer partners, or for projects with a majority, the managing partner is designated as disadvantaged business enterprise, resident-owned business enterprise, or who are designated as socially disadvantaged under the SBA definition. A few changes to highlight just outside of the threshold and evaluation criteria. In the average income set aside requirements, given the updated guidance from the IRS, we are proposing removing the kind of 1% cushion to the average income test and removing the required-for income band. So projects would not be limited to the 30%, 50%, 60%, and 80% AMGI income bands. Also proposed increases to the ongoing compliance monitoring fees, $20 per unit per year during the compliance period and $10 per unit per year after that. To highlight the proposed schedules, we've been working the last few months on the proposed updates. The Draft 2023 QAP was released on our website for public comment on February 3. Tonight, we are here at the public hearing, and we have extended the public comment period through the end of the week, so Friday, March 3 at 5:00 p.m. And then my team here will be reviewing all of the comments, making any other changes based on those comments received, and incorporating our response into the final draft, expected to be published in March. And now we can move into the public testimony part of the evening.
Thank you, Anna. Good evening, everyone. On the screen, you see instructions here for public testimony. That includes that individuals wishing to provide testimony will be limited to five minutes. That will keep track of that time and provide you a note at one minute. We can proceed alphabetically if the list is long, but I don't think it is. And so what I may suggest is that if you are interested in providing public comment, that you indicate so in the chat, and we'll elevate you to the role of panelist to do so this evening. If you're calling in, after everyone who is signed in virtually to the Webex, we can move to call in callers, whereby I will unmute you and ask if you're interested in providing public comment. There's no other good way to do that when you're on the phone and you can't access the chat feature. So hopefully, having filibustered long enough for folks to read the public testimony instructions before them and decide if they'd like to provide public comment, please do so by indicating in the chat, and we'll unmute you. Buying some time for folks to do that, I will draw people's attention to a question and answer we received in the Q&amp;A feature that asked if there are points for proximity to metro stops. The answer is yes, there are.
So we did have Richard, one person, sign up to make a public comment. That was Omar Kareem. I'm not sure if he is on, but Omar, if you are on, the floor is yours.
I don't see Mr. Kareem in the attendees list. There's always one brave soul who wants to speak, and then others will follow. So we can give a few more moments for anybody wishing to provide testimony to indicate so in the chat, and then we'll unmute. And perhaps I'll turn to our brave phone caller-ins to see if they would like. I see one person calling in from 301602. Caller 301602, you are unmuted. Would you like to provide public comment?
Hi, sir. This is Ms. Crystal from APA. I'm actually on the train, so sorry for the background noise, but I'll just quickly say two things. So one, thank you so much for adding a clear universal design standard. That was unclear last time, and I think it's great. The Virginia Housing one is a really, is a really good one. I also think it's good that you split up that point category between, you know, kind of what population you're serving and whether you're doing accessible housing. And then I would just encourage in the housing for older adult section, kind of looking closely at the accessibility requirements there to make sure they're realistic and achievable. One more thing. For the homeownership and wealth building, it's awesome that you've added a bunch of points for like credit building. APA does a lot of that stuff, and I think even more points should go towards that, because that's actually, you know, much more achievable for developers to do, to help people prepare for their next home after our rental housing to be homeownership. So those points should be higher. Okay, that's all I'll do for now. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir, and appreciate your multitasking on the train. That was, that worked very well. I see another caller from area code 240447. You are unmuted. Would you like to provide public comment? Again, that was phone area code 240, first three digits 447. You're unmuted if you'd like to provide public comment. If not, you can say no, or I'll just mute you again. Not hearing from them, returning them to mute. Erin, I'm not seeing any more phone call-ins to unmute, and I don't see any comments in the chat wishing to provide public comment after a few rounds of requests. So I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. One final call for public comments in the hearing. I do want to remind everyone-
Something in the chat. It's just all something that just popped up in the chat.
I'm not seeing anything in the chat.
Do you want me to read it?
I'll respond in the Q&amp;A.
Okay.
Okay, so last call for anyone who wants to make a comment. Want to remind everyone that you can submit public testimony through Friday. The best way to do that is through email at qap input at d c dot gov. You can also mail comments to the address on the screen, and the deadline for those is Friday, March 3 at 5:00. So we truly encourage and hope that you all will provide written comments. We, I think as Hannah stated, we do review them, and we do evaluate them, and we do make change- We, I think as Hannah stated, we do review them, and we do evaluate them, and we do make changes as appropriate based on the comments.
Before we conclude, Joe, I'll give you a second to respond to the question in the Q and A so that it's included in the recording of this meeting. Or you can respond verbally so we have it for the record.
Yeah, I can respond verbally as typing. So the consolidated RFP will mirror, in July, will mirror the release that happened in January where DCHFA's readiness round will occur first, and then the RFP will be released. The RFP typically has a longer application period, so I don't know, I don't think we can commit to one month, as you mentioned in your question, but there will be a specified application period as part of the RFP.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe. That concludes tonight's public hearing. A recording of the hearing will be posted online. And as the screen indicates, written comments will be accepted through Friday. Thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful evening.